Okay, I have the time at 6 o'clock, so I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Harsy?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. And our first item is approval of the minutes from May 16. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Shandra Bishop. Any comments or changes? Seeing none, we can do a voice vote for this, correct? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Next, we have additions to the agenda. Are there any additions or changes? Yes, Mayor Marlin?
We have two. The first is, we're going to remove item number seven from the agenda. That's the discussion of the liquor code. There will be some additional revisions proposed, and we hope to bring that back on July 5th, Committee of the Whole. And then the second change is removal of item number 11, which is the special use permit for the jail consolidation. And this item is being moved to July 5th at the request of the applicants.
Thank you. So we are removing items seven and 11 for tonight, for a later date. Next item is public input and presentations. For public input, if anyone would like to address the council, you may approach. Please speak into the microphone and state your name for the record, and you have five minutes for input.
Patrick Thompson. Can you guys hear me? Patrick Thompson, president and owner of Via Inc. I am here tonight to ask and request that the minority contracting policy, or some policy, be put in place. I see that you guys are getting ready to approve a capital improvement plan. And so if that's going to be dealing with construction, then I would like to see some minority or some kind of program that would be able to be included into the bid documents. RFPs, bid documents, because if those things are not done, then there's no opportunity, or very little opportunity, for minority contractors to be able to be considered. That is normally what these programs that you see within the state, other municipalities, Champaign, you know, IDOT, they have those documents included into the bid documents. And it gives instructions to contractors on the percentage goals, or how to meet the goals, what needs to be done to meet the goals, whether you're doing combined goals, split goals. But those things need to be added into those bid documents in order for contractors, minority contractors, to be considered based upon us, you know, the need for diversity, and a lot of us minority contractors are, you know, haven't been in business, you know, we don't have decades, or 20, or, you know, 50 years of being in business. So these are the mechanisms and things that the federal government and the state has allowed for these programs to be put in place. So I'd like to really see any other project that comes out. I think the last project didn't have any goals on it at all. So I would like to see, going forward, any project that comes out have some goals, especially if it's going to be public works. And I'd like to get some kind of response back on who's going to be in charge of it, you know, which office is it going to come out of, and who's going to manage it, and will there be some compliance components to it to ensure that these, you know, the goals are being met? So I'm hoping maybe the mayor's office, or the city administrator, or human resource, or economic, whoever's going to be, if you're all going to be working, if all of the departments going to be working on it, that's fine, but I would like to get some kind of feedback on who's going to be, or when is this going to be implemented, how is it going to be implemented, and can we be able to see that, those policies put in place before another project comes out to bid? Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Almax Axelrod, City of Urbana. So I brought this up to the Champaign City Council last week. I'm going to bring it up to you all as well. If you look at the seven-day average of deaths per day, this summer is worse than last summer, nationally. It's almost identical statewide. That bodes poorly for when our protections go away. And lest anybody is confused about the summer spike that we had, which started in mid-April, 40,000 households were disconnected in our state, 41,000 and change, 41,421 in April. The zenith happened in May, over 8,000 COVID cases as a single-day high. In May, we have had an all-time record, during this pandemic, I should say, of 71,620 utility shut-offs. This is all while the most vulnerable households are being protected, that we're seeing this elevated caseload. They will be shut off in August. As I've explained before to this city council, the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program II ends at the end of July currently. When you look at what happened when the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program, the first one existed, it ended at the end of June. Mid-July, we started to see a caseload increase. That combined with people going back to school, that caused the increase to go further. The seven-day average started to go down, but stayed above 2,000, and then holiday travel hit. That has led to the single worst pandemic spike that our state has gone through. There are 34,005 people dead in our state from COVID alone. So when I mention that at the end of July, we're having the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program II end, take it seriously, because there isn't anything substantial in August. The LIHEEP Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program does not start until September. And that's for applications. Getting the money's the second thing. We need that one-month tie-over to be extended. It's not such a radical ask. Please understand that lives are on the line when it comes with that. Now that our data is back up and running, we will be preparing resolutions again, because we've tried to see if internal advocacy would work. It has not. That means that we need to be more public. That being said, so this is not your fault, but it is relevant to Charisse and to Shandra. So a few years ago, Charisse, you may remember that a house right by me was shot up 16 times. The family needed help with staying sheltered and everything like that, and you tried to help. She is homeless right now, trying to find out where she can sleep. Her kids are currently in Ward 5. I have tried fundraising for her. She has contacted the Cunningham Township as of Friday, and so far, not yet, but when you look at federal statistics and everything, it's not like we can blame them for her solution or her situation not yet being fully resolved. I'm going to be taking her to, if we follow through with her request, it's up to her, right? I will be going to the Daily Bread with her tomorrow. So for you, or any of your contacts that can help this person quickly, that would be a good place to meet up. For those who don't know, Daily Bread is our local soup kitchen. They usually run from around 10 to 1:00, or somewhere in that area. So we'll be going there tomorrow, because she's pretty much out of options when it comes to food, and is right now not here, because she's looking actively for shelter. So again, if there's anything that anybody on the council can do, I know that I mentioned people, but that's because it's relevant to your wards. They're not the only people experiencing this, I'm sure. If any of you can help get this person housed or sheltered in a sustainable way, quickly, because today was up to, what, 98 degrees? That would go a long way, because this family is, I'm not going to get too much into their personals beyond what I've mentioned, but they really need your help. Our systems, as they currently exist, presume transportation. The time to afford that transportation, this family's got neither. So please, reach out. You know how to get in contact with me, and if you don't, just ask any one of your colleagues. And let's just try to get this person safe right now, and her kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. If anyone else would like to address the council, you may approach the microphone. Seeing no other comments, our next item is staff report on commercial signage grant program.
Darius White, Economic Development Coordinator with Community Development. Excited to report to you today a new business grant. We will be offering the Commercial Signage Grant that will begin Friday, July 1st. This program will provide assistance to local businesses, local business owners seeking to replace and/or modify existing signage to meet current city requirements. This program is intended to beautify the key entryways and corridors, leverage public investment to enhance the existing community, and promote economic growth. While offering this program, we're hoping to address ongoing concerns with physical appearances of businesses within the TIF districts and the Philo Business District by improving of building exteriors, increasing public awareness, therefore assisting with tourism, as well as addressing feedback that we have received from property owners while dealing with business owners who are having difficulties with paying for signage, as well as removing old signage that is no longer in use. As well, this program will be available to both new and existing businesses. The program will replace our new business grant, as well as business development grant. That program will conclude August 1st, and we will help any businesses that are currently, which are two right now, that are currently going through the process of applying for the business development and new business grant. And just a little history on those two grants. They have been going since 2013, with roughly a 50% success rate of businesses staying open for more than one year. There have been 134 grants awarded. 67 businesses are currently open. 33 of those businesses have closed, and 34 businesses are unknown. Either they have transitioned to home businesses, or they, we cannot find any information on them yet. In this case, not enough to call it that the business has closed. Just once again, as we have development going on downtown, and desire development on the Cunningham Road as a connection to the Rand Tool Sports Complex to assist with enhancing tourism, this will be a great program that, once again, will assist both new and existing businesses moving forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions for Darius? Yes, Mary Alice.
So you ran through those numbers pretty quickly. How many businesses would be eligible?
So in this program, every business that is within our TIF zones, as well as on Philo Business District.
Do you know roughly approximately how many businesses that is?
I don't have an exact number, but clear into definitely more than 400 businesses will be eligible for that, within those areas.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Yes.
The questions? I have some.
Yes.
And so this would be for all three TIF districts, is that right, and Philo Road?
Correct.
And are there hard boundaries on Philo Road Business District?
Our Philo Road Business District does go south to the, what am I thinking of? The Pines, so as south as the Pines, if that helps. And the north entrance will be Florida, Florida and Philo.
I was just wondering if it might be helpful to, like, include a map or something with the application material, just so people could easily check if they're within those areas?
Yes, we can add that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. My other question was, is this grant program, are these funds coming from the city, is that correct?
Correct, from the TIF.
From the TIFs?
Yes.
And even for Philo Road, even though?
Philo Road comes from our general fund.
Okay. And is this already included in the FY '23 budget that we've received?
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is that right? Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay. So would like an estimate of how many might be funded is already included in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Shandra?
What was the opening grant and the development grant? Like, was it just an amount of money? Was it?
Yeah, so the opening grant was a $1,000 grant that was given to a new business within six months of its signing of one-year lease. And then the business development grant was provided to our businesses who were doing some type of change to their structure that was permanent, whether interior or exterior. However, it was very limited, and for the most part, majority of our businesses that took advantage of that were new businesses. And we did receive a lot of feedback from existing businesses for a grant program that would support them.
Thank you. Any last questions? Or do we take a motion, Charisse?
I guess what I want to understand, too, is that this is a matching grant?
Correct. It is a matching grant, up to $2,000, so a minimum of $4,000 of a project for the business, and, excuse me, minimum of $1,000. So we will do as low as $500 up to 2,000, excuse me.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was getting ahead, asking for a motion, and realizing this is just a report.
Yes.
So I guess last question would be, is there, you know, any input you'd like from council in particular? Or this is kind of an update of the new programs?
Just general update of the new program, and also just happy to answer any questions regarding the program, or any way that we could improve it, such as putting the maps and making sure that that is obtainable by any applicant.
Thank you. Yes, Shandra?
What is the cost, the average cost, I guess, of signage? Or does it vary? I know you're putting in, like, you know, the, what do they call it? The triangle signs on the sidewalk to awnings? Like, is there sort of like a price range for that?
So, yeah, so there's just a very wide price range, just really depending on what that business owner is interested in going for. I believe what we hope to do for the economic development is to pretty much observe it for the first six months of the program, to see if there's any need for a change in the amount. And what we'll do is we'll work with building safety as those permits come in, and planning, just to get an average to see if there's a need for change. But honestly, I've talked to individuals in Lincoln Square Mall who will be eligible for this, and they are getting signage for as less, or as low as $500. But then I'm talking to individuals on Main Street who are paying $5,000 for it. So it could really, if there's a large range, just depending on the desire of the business owner.
Well, it's good that you'll be reassessing to see if, you know, a match of $2,000 is enough for a business to really have a impactful sign.
Correct.
You don't want a large storefront to have like a little bitty sign, so.
Exactly, yes.
Yes, Charisse?
I guess my next question is this, is that, okay, if a business has, is getting new signage, and their signage is $5,000, they can apply for up to $2,000 of that in matching funds?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Yes.
Then I thought of a few more. Would this apply to nonprofits, or only for-profit businesses?
Only for-profit businesses.
Okay. Sad, I was thinking about Salt and Light there on Philo. And I was wondering about if there's a plan for spreading awareness of this program?
Yes, and throughout the time that I've been here, we've been trying to establish a business list, and that information will go out in that business list. We will also utilize things from out of Bridgetts, what Bridgetts provides with the newsletter, as well as social media. So as much channels that we have to advertise this information, we will do so.
Thank you. And with the nonprofits not being eligible, is that part of TIF, or that's just this particular program?
That's part of TIF, yes, due to not being a taxing body to provide, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any last questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
And next item is discussion on ARPA update from Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. Make sure it's very close, and the green light should be on?
Can you hear me now? Okay. Let me just load this quickly. I'm Ashley McLaughlin with the Regional Planning Commission. I am usually here with J.D. McClanahan, and he is on another project right now, but he will be back soon. Oh, I've forgotten how to fullscreen this. That we'll do for now, I think. Okay. So the agenda for today is to go through a brief overview of the concept plan, and then focus on the priorities for the ARPA funding in order to develop the concept plan, and then talk a little bit about next steps. So first, the concept plan itself, just to check in with the timeline. We are currently right at the bottom of the first column here, working with you all to finalize priorities. And then the whole middle column is developing the concept plan. So right now, the timing says spring 2022, when we'll start the concept plan, through fall. We're hoping to do that a little quicker. I know you all are wanting this to get done as quickly as possible. We do continue to have staffing limitations, but we are working hard to advance this as quickly as we can. So we're hoping to get it done within the summer, but we will keep you updated, of course. So a brief outline of the concept plan, just as a reminder, this is going to serve as a comprehensive guide to the city's ARPA strategy, goals, and application process. So that includes, one, ARPA Federal Guidelines and Background, which is just an overview of the program, links to official documentation. That information was included, actually, in the January 24 council presentation. Urbana's ARPA planning process, so that will include the review of existing plans that was done, also included in the January presentation. The mayor and council strategic goals, which you're familiar with, as well as the public involvement summary, which we presented at our previous presentation for you all in May. In addition, the concept plan will be highlighting the funding priorities that the city has selected. So that is what tonight's discussion is about. And then lastly, the application process. So for anyone interested in applying for ARPA funds, this will be a complete package for them to understand the background, the priorities, and then also the process for applying for those funds. So that will be our next steps after defining the priorities. So tonight, we're looking for direction on the priorities themselves, like I said, in order to develop the concept plan. So at our last presentation for you in May, we presented a full summary of the public input that we received from the survey, the online survey, and paper survey, and input sessions. So in addition to that, we spent a little extra time looking specifically at input from disproportionately impacted communities, so low-income, over-65, non-white and Hispanic individuals, to make sure that we weren't missing any priorities, and that those priorities were consistent with the ones that we were moving forward with. So we considered all of that. We also looked at overlap then with the mayor and council strategic goals. And lastly, as we're kind of filtering down our overarching priorities, we compared all of that with the federal guidance to make sure the priorities, obviously, were consistent with the ARPA funding guidance. So as a reminder, one of the components of our outreach was to rank our priority areas: public health and safety, adequate and affordable housing, human rights and social services, sustainable infrastructure, and economic recovery and development. So the big finding was that everyone wanted to do all of these. There weren't any kind of outstanding frontrunners. They were all pretty close, which means, you know, maybe initially, we thought this might get filtered down quite a bit more, and that there might be, you know, one or three overarching priorities, but they all seemed to be important values to people. The actual rankings themselves did vary a little bit for a couple of the individual populations, as shown on the screen, but they were all still close, like within about a point difference. So in that sense, we didn't recommend, we're not recommending excluding any of these. We're recommending kind of moving forward with them all for now, of course, at your discretion. So as a summary, the five overarching priority areas are at the top, and then what is listed below each one are kind of the emerging priorities within each priority area that we think, that we feel confident with moving forward, moving forward with for the concept plan. So these are priorities that are popular with the public, that are popular with at least one or more of the disproportionately impacted populations, that overlap with the council goals, and that are eligible for ARPA funds. So for public health and safety, that's improving accessibility of public recreation space and youth programming, increasing support for community violence interventions. For adequate and affordable housing, that's reducing housing costs for those that need it most. For human rights and social services, there were two main services that people focused on, or resources, and that was mental health services and food access. For economic development and recovery, increasing job training and placement opportunities, as well as providing relief and support for local businesses. And last, for sustainable infrastructure, investing in infrastructure to increase community health, safety, and future resilience. So all of these are quite broad still. There's still a lot of room for people to apply for different ideas within these, but this is the summary that we've kind of filtered down from that huge display of public input that we discussed last time. So I'm just going to walk through each one of these briefly, and feel free to stop me anytime if you have questions, or we can save those for the end. So for public health and safety, just as a review, the recreation priority and safety and law enforcement priority, about 95% of all of the input was focused on one of those two things that were listed in the previous screen, so improving accessibility of public recreation spaces, and also reducing crime and violence in the community. These were some of the repeated ideas. These are the most popular ideas that were included in the public survey, and like I mentioned, that were popular among all groups, including disproportionately impacted groups. I won't go through them all, because we just did that last time, so we'll talk about, we can talk about it more in depth later, if you'd like. As for the mayor and council strategic goals, I'll just touch on these, because obviously you're familiar with them, so this is more for the public's sake, I guess, but this particular goal overlaps with strategic area number one, pursue methods to, or, sorry, public safety and well-being, action step one, or strategy one. Um, action step one, or strategy one, to pursue methods to mitigate community violence. There are action steps, of course, affiliated with each one of these, but I won't walk through all of them. Strategy two, enhance and expand public safety resources. And strategy three, to promote community well-being. So a lot of overlap with this particular goal. Um, and that's all for public health and safety. So, moving on to adequate and affordable housing, about 67% of all the input, public input in this category was focused on reducing housing costs for people, and that could be through rent assistance, mortgage assistance, um, rehab, utility assistance, any one of those things to help people, um, get affordable housing. In terms of overlap with the strategic goals, uh, this is strategic area number two, housing. And strategy number one, support housing security and equity. And I will just mention that RPC is working on, or helping with the home ARP action plan, which could help inform potential allocations in this category. Strategy two, improve hous- housing quality. And that's all for that one. Next, we have human rights and social services. About 58% of all the input in this category focused on, um, increasing the availability and affordability of mental health services, as well as convenient access to food. So this was a little bit of a catch-all, um, but these were the themes that came through most that we felt like had potential for a lot of overlap with ARPA funding, and also have overlap with, um, the strategic goals. So this is strategic area number one, again, public safety and well-being. Funding and supporting community partners that promote health and wellness. Also, strategic area number four, economic recovery and development. Number, the strategy number three, recruit new businesses and industries, and action step B did specifically call out, identifying or facilitating a new grocery store and essential services in Northwest Urbana. So next, we have priority area four, which is economic recovery and development. So, all of the input in this category was generally focused on supporting employees and supporting employers. And that meant a number of different things. But generally, that boiled down to expanding job training and placement opportunities for individuals and employees, and then also providing relief for small, local, and/or struggling businesses. For the strategic goals, strategic area number four, economic recovery and development, number one is to support current local businesses. Strategy two, promote workforce development. Oh, and just those two. So the last one, sustainable infrastructure. About 53% of the input in this category was focused on non-transportation infrastructure. So a caveat here is that a lot of the public input was focused on transportation. Transportation expenses aren't directly eligible for ARPA funding. They can be eligible, but there are conditions attached. It's more of, uh, an expense that's, affiliated with revenue replacement more than general ARPA funding. So this one is a little bit more specific. So removing the transportation aspect, I mean, transportation could still be an expense, but we are thinking that as a non-directly eligible expense, it would be better to focus on the other emphasis areas in this category, which are utilities and future preparedness. So a lot of the input was centered around, the non-transportation input was centered around improving sewers, drainage, and flood control, investing in and supporting renewable energy, providing internet access for folks, and protecting our water sources. So, overlap with the strategic goals are, for strategic, strategic area number three, which is infrastructure, strategy number three is to expand green infrastructure within the community. And that was the overlap. So, in summary, this is basically, like I said, a filtered down list from the public input that we presented last time. So what we're looking for tonight is essentially direction from you all, so that we can move forward with the concept plan. Does this narrowed down list make sense to you all to move forward with? We don't have to include all of them. We can include fewer than this. One thing to consider when thinking about what to include or not include would be, as we move through the application development process, the broader these kind of applications become, the more work it's going to be to assess and compare. And not only assess and compare the applications, but also to support applicants through the process. In addition, the, the more thin the funds get spread, obviously, the potential for, um, the impact to be smaller. You know, if you wanted to focus your impact, you could select fewer categories. But like I said, we're confident in the ones here, that they're well-supported within the public and also within, um, the council goals. So any feedback at this point on these, on this narrowed down list of categories?
Thank you for the presentation. Are there questions? Slash comments? Yes, Shonda?
I, I know there are seven of them in, in the five categories, but as you mentioned, I think that it succinctly represents, our council goals as well as the public input, and I, I'm trying to think of a way to narrow it down, but I, I think it is what it is, and I think we can move forward with what's here, in my opinion.
Okay. Yes, Chris?
Yeah, I want to do all this. So, but you, like you said, that lowers the amount of each thing you do. So, um, I guess, can we, I got, we say this a lot, but can we get this PowerPoint presentation sent to our email? Thank you. And then, I guess, can we, how much time do we have? To send, okay, well, the seven, I think these three are most, you know, give you a, a priority list of, of that. Can we, like, a couple of weeks, can we do that, or?
Well, that's a good question. So if you want to move forward with all of them, that's enough for us to start developing the concept plan. When it comes to further prioritizing them, I think that's a step that could wait for the application process. You could either, in the application process, prioritize certain projects, or once you receive applications, then kind of decide based on the strength of the projects or ideas that are submitted, then how to allocate the funds specifically.
I have one more question. Um, so what, what should I tell potential applicants right now? Like, where should they send their proposal at this point? I, I got that today, this week, so.
Okay. Uh, well, there's no application yet. So, once we finish the concept plan, which includes, like I said, all the materials people would kind of need to know, then we'll be able to finalize the application. So my understanding is that the city's application process is, run by a third-party system, and so that will take a minute to kind of figure that out. But once the application then is finalized, we'll want to develop some resources for people to walk them through that process. Every application is unique, and we want to make sure everyone has a fair and consistent shot, you know, at, at developing their ideas and getting this funding. So, we'll want to have some resources, help resources in place before people actually start submitting proposals. So, I would say it'll be at least two months by the time we not only do the concept plan, but, I, I guess I couldn't say two months, but finalizing the concept plan, it's the application part I'm less certain about, because I'm not as familiar with the process.
Yes, Mary Alice?
So some of these, I can, I can see a, a direct relationship in terms of providing grants to, to community organizations that already work in food insecurity and working with youth and, and so forth. But some of them, I can see it also being, uh, either a partnership or, or the local government doing something. So, support local businesses, for example, could potentially be a quote-unquote "city" program. We already have, um, carved out 2.5 million for the city's share. I guess, I don't know if this is a question to, to Carol and to Diane, but if there's a, a program that the city itself manages to provide, I'm just using it as an example, support for local businesses, how does that work into this whole grant application process?
Right. Um, so we were envisioning that if the city had ideas, or specific departments had ideas, that they would be submitting applications along with everyone else. But that's just kind of a, we haven't actually talked about that explicitly with the city. So if you have other opinions, please feel free.
Well, I think there was a presentation last week, uh, about the standard allowance. So, much of the standard allowance is kind of, uh, and, you know, it remains to be, uh, approved, but it's sort of been, I'll say, spoken for. Doesn't mean it's all spoken for, but we, we kind of have it sketched out. So I think that, um, as Ashley said, there, there is an opportunity for us through some local programs that we're already running, that we would want to magnify potentially. Or if we're finding maybe that we're not getting applications in a particular area, and we feel that we need to step in so that area is being addressed, because it's not being addressed by applicants, then we can, we can deal with it that way.
And just a reminder, I, I know you all remember, but maybe the public doesn't, we do have the home ARP funds that need to coordinate with the ARPA funds that we're distributing, and those focus on the housing aspect of things.
You, Joe?
So, Ashley, thank you. As always, it's very easily digest, digestible. I really appreciate that. You kind of already answered this, but I just kind of want to further clarify, because, you know, all seven of these are important. And I think, um, clarifying that even if we said, let's move forward with all seven, if we didn't get strong applications in one of these areas, there's nothing that says that we can't, and it's, again, the sum of this is more of a city question, but also kind of a, a question for the purpose of clarification. You know, if we got really great applicant, applications in, in three of these areas, and not in the others, it doesn't say, there's nothing to say that we wouldn't just fund those programs, right? So even though we're identifying, and Carol's point too, right, if, if we're identifying all seven of these, but maybe there's an area that didn't receive strong applications, that might be a time where the city is stepping in. But I, I think that's kind of an important point of clarification too, because I don't want us to hamper ourselves and say, even though I know it's more work, let's not have all seven because, you know, because of the work aspect, because I think that it's important to keep in mind that we're, by limiting it, we're limiting the kinds of applications we could get, while keeping it broader doesn't mean that we are necessarily going to fund something in every single category. It means that we have the opportunity to do so. I don't know if that eventually made sense.
Sure. I think at this stage, that's kind of the expectation we're operating under. If you all want to put additional kind of framework around any of these categories in the future, that's possible, but I think that's smart at this point, is to leave it open. You know, see what kind of applications you get, and then, in that sense, you can prioritize the money however it seems most appropriate at that time.
Thank you. Uh, Mary Alice, would you take the chair for comments?
Sure, the chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Um, thank you again, Ashley, for the presentation and for the work your office has done putting this together. It's definitely helpful to take all those pieces, and I appreciate taking our goals as a serious part of this. I agree with others. I think that these seven look good to me for areas, and I think keeping our options open is good. Some of my concerns, I'm, I'm just feeling this push of, you know, we're trying to get funding out quickly, and we're trying to have an informed, you know, good process. And I'm just concerned about like a closing timeline window for applicants, and I just want to be sure that applicants have a sufficient amount of time to really apply. So I guess no specific question, but just my concern I'm thinking about in this process. Um, and then another one is those kind of unique solutions that people have already mentioned, that might be a city program. And I just don't know if, you know, hypothetically, there could be an application for someone saying, you know, I own this business, or I run this nonprofit, and I want to offer these services, here's my budget, versus an idea of like, I want the city to provide low-barrier grants, or I want this kind of program for utility assistance, or something that, you know, the applicant's not going to directly do, but it's an ask that could be done of another organization. And so I don't know if, um, I guess the question is if you think there's a way to incorporate those, and they seem very different to me.
Yeah, I would agree those are different. I think at this stage, I think the survey was really intended to serve as that idea push. Um, I think at this stage, when it comes to applications, we're really looking for applications from the people that will be administering the programs or services. So, less ideas. I mean, someone could certainly come to the city and say, is there a possibility of doing X program? But it will not be a strong application, I wouldn't say, without the systems in place to actually execute it, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes, it does. I'm just thinking about some might be lost, um, you know, like someone could say, we want the city to put another $2 million out of ARPA for another round of equals application stuff, the equity and quality of life grants that we've done internally, which, you know, do require city, you know, staff time and things, I imagine, to do them. But something that, um, to me seems like we have that system in place, you know?
Right. No, I think that's a fair point. And again, if there is a system that already exists, as long as they're the ones putting forward the application, I think that's absolutely, um, appropriate. But, of course, we can't take someone else's desire over someone else's ability to actually execute it. So as long as it's, you know, the program administrator applying and acknowledging that they are committed to following through on the, you know, on the work and the documentation required, et cetera, then, yeah, I think it can be a wide range of entities could fulfill these.
Okay. And you're saying that the, the city or the township or whatever organization needs to apply for themselves? So to, for anyone of the public who has an idea like that and wants to push an organization to talk to them directly to apply.
Or nonprofit, or local business, yeah, any, any entity.
Thank you very much.
All right, would you like to chair back, Grace?
Yes, please.
All right, I relinquish the chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on ARPA? Casey, none? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And our next order of business is resolution number 2022 dash zero six dash zero five seven R. A resolution approving the capital improvement plan with presentation from Public Works and Executive.
Okay, thank you. So this one should be pretty short. Um, this is the capital improvement plan. We all saw the capital improvement plan in May on the, on the 16th. So the capital improvement plan, as, um, you see in front of you, is substantially the same. None of the project scopes have changed since then. There has been some, you know, financials have changed, some funds from project years moved, there were some 2001 expenses that ended up being 22. So there's some moving around. The, we earned less interest income than we thought in our initial projections, so that revised kind of all the funds' interest downwards a little bit. But all in all, is the same that everybody saw in the presentation a couple of weeks ago, so, um, there's no substantial changes. Questions, though?
Thank you. Any questions? Mary Alice?
I don't have the exact page, but one of the things that struck me in the, um, budget book, and maybe this is for the budget presentation, was an amount that was set aside for working on the city building. And I know that we had talked about the internal, um, kind of wayfinding and, and so forth, but what other items are immediately going to be done to the city building?
So, the, excuse me. Uh, the wayfinding is kind of the, the primary function right now of the lobby reconfiguration for use of space and things like that. We also have security enhancements that will be parlayed, and i- it's a separate standalone. It's like a $220,000 effort to take whatever is decided for the lobby security stuff and kind of implement that more citywide, so we have a structured security system kind of citywide to, you know, get in and out of the facilities and, and have that control. Outside of that, uh, the city building itself, I can't think of anything else. There's some ADA enhancements that are also kind of earmarked separate from the lobby reconfiguration itself, um, for that. But I think that's it in fiscal year '23.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Chris?
Yeah, uh, looking over the, um, the plan, am I understanding this right, that the two fire stations are going to be the only items that will be bonded out and kind of, where we're going to borrow to, to do those projects?
I think, uh, the borrowing is borrowing for all the facility projects. It's not necessarily tied to a specific project.
Okay.
So we have a whole bunch of facility, you know, the public, there's a sequence of Public Works ones as well. So it's not necessarily directly tied to this one or that. So, yeah, it's not individual. And then, there's another question? Sorry, did I, note, so the, this is the plan, and then the official allocation of the money does occur within the budget. So this is kind of the big picture. And then as scopes change, or, you know, I think you see Tim come a lot for, you know, motorfield, things like that, that, those are the budget norm, uh, amendment, so. Those are the budget amendment. So just a quick note, sorry.
Sure. Other questions? Mary Alice, did you have further? I had some real quick. I was wondering about the equals project. It seems like we're continuing last year's stuff that still needs to be selected and carried out, right? So we're not doing a new one for '23, but we're kind of finishing out what we had started. Is that correct?
Correct. We're still, we have the applications. We're trying to implement the plan now. So that money just shifted a fiscal year so that we can actually implement it in '23.
And do you happen to know if there's any long-term plans for that continuing in future years?
I would say that that is kind of up to you guys to decide and, and the success of it, you know? So if we go through this and it's super successful, you know, certainly additional rounds of that could be considered as part of the capital improvement plan systematically going forward.
Thank you. And then, was that correct hearing that you said that in this '23 budget, the only major city building constructions is the city building lobby renovations?
For the city building itself. We also have some public works rehabilitation that's happening out at our facility there on Glover Avenue. And that's kind of a campus-wide thing because we're, we're shuffling a lot of things around to bring essentially all of our operations back under, into one campus for public works because we've got some facilities that are located out by the LRC. That's our Arbor and Landscape Divisions. And we want to kind of bring them back in and then give our Fleet Department adequate space to work as well. So that will be happening, beginning in FY '23 as well. But the city building specific were the projects that I discussed.
Okay. And you said for some of the bigger designs, like the fire stations and whole revamps and bigger stuff, that's not, in this year, we're still in the design phase and those designs will come to council for more decisions? Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, we're, the, the, just an update on the fire stations, it's kind of the one that's further along right now. We're in a, kind of a scoping phase right now to kind of develop options for, at what level do we support these different things? And we're trying to get that together. And then what we would plan on doing is once we have that kind of vetted by staff internally from our consultant, we would then bring a presentation back to council to get your guys' input on that.
Thank you. And then last one for now, I think, is I, I think you came in, maybe didn't get to hear all of Mr. Thompson's comments about the CDEP and minority goals, especially for this big, you know, capital improvement plan and some of the really big construction costs that we'll have. And I didn't know if you had any insight or anything you could share about how or if we can incorporate some of these goals into these construction project plans?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that would just be dependent on what we, what, what you folks choose as a city for policy for those type of things. You know, we, we have goals in place currently. We did do some outreach, I know recently, to try to get more incorporation and involvement in those type of things on our capital projects and, and also our operations and maintenance projects that are kind of ongoing, outsource things. But yeah, you know, I think that that, that goal has to be, well, we have a goal now. If we, if we're changing that to something different, you know, we have to have the discussion of what's realistic, what can we do? And, and what is supported, you know, at the same time. So I, I would say it's, it's kind of the privy of, of you folks and then probably our HRC to kind of weigh in on what, what makes sense there.
So you said that would be a policy? Do you have any more specifics on like, would that be in construction or budgeting or?
Well, I, I think that, you know, as far as a procurement thing, that that probably falls back to more an HRC discussion. If we, if we roll something like that out and we're going to implement in our CIP or in specific projects, we can do so. We just have to, we don't have a policy that says this is our specific target. We have goals right now that is a target from the HRC on that. And Carol might be able to weigh in a little bit more on that.
Sure. Thank you, Carol.
Thanks. I do want to make a distinction between goals, aspirational goals, which is really what the CDEP program in Champaign is built on right now. It's not requirements. So I think on some of the federal projects and state projects, there are actually hard requirements for minority business enterprises and women-owned business enterprises to participate. So what we've been doing, which is, Darius and I are actually going to be meeting with some folks from Champaign, I don't know, next week, week or two, about CDEP so that we can learn a little bit more. But the way, what they have been doing, it has been explained to me, is that it's very procurement-specific. So if you remember when Carla and I were here and we were talking about CDEP, that there's uneven distribution of representation of companies in different trades and stuff. So one of the things that happened recently was Public Works went out for janitorial services, and we were rebidding that contract. So they did multiple things to try to get participation from folks on the CDEP list. So one of the things that they did was they unbundled the procurement. So it used to be all the, all the janitorial for, for the city-owned facilities was in one procurement. And I don't know how many pieces you broke it into, like three? And so that somebody maybe who didn't have the capacity to do all of it could bid part of it or all of it, depending. It was, it was optional. So that was the first thing. The second thing was that the solicitation was sent out to all the firms on the CDEP list that listed janitorial as a service that they provided. Then I believe there were follow-up phone calls, and none of the firms on the CDEP list submitted a proposal. So what the, I think, first of all, we have a lot more, you know, we have, we have employees who are, we don't have one person assigned to this. We have a lot of people that have been sensitized to this now. And we're trying to learn more about what's the capacity of the firms that are on the list. So that was the same thing with the mixers to, you know, see, well, how many people will show up and how many have the capacity to do a project or, or sub whatever the, whatever the trade is on a, on a, on a project the size of the fire station. So I think we're, we're still learning and we're trying to do it very much customized project by project so that we don't create a situation where the goals are unrealistic. And we certainly, I don't think we're ready to go to a requirement because I just don't know that we have the depth in the, of the firms in this area. But I think we're learning a lot, and I think we're really, we are extending ourselves in a way that we haven't in the past to try to be inclusive and make sure these firms are aware of these opportunities. So more to come. I mean, we are very committed to, to doing something meaningful with the fire stations, but we want it to be something that we can achieve, you know, that we can achieve results and not set unrealistic expectations for ourselves or, or anyone else.
Yes, Chris?
I, I hear all that, Carol. I guess when I, when I, the way I see goals work is that we have them. And like you said, there's aspirations and there's requirements. But if we have the goals, then doesn't good faith efforts, as long as we're making a good faith effort, we can have the goals even if we don't make the goals, is what?
Well, I, I think it becomes a question of what, what does the goal mean? So if you, if you say, on, if you say on a particular project, and it's a, it's a fire station, so it's got lots of, you know, it's got a general contractor and then it's got a bunch of subs. And you say, well, we, we're going to require 10% participation from women-owned or minority-owned firms. Okay, that's, that's something that we can probably manage and set realistic expectations and that people could achieve that. I think we have enough depth. But if we were to take a smaller project, say, say a paving project of some kind, and say, well, we're just going to require that goes to a minority or a women-owned firm, then you have to factor in, well, what about if the bids aren't realistic? Or what about if that person, that firm doesn't have the actual capacity to do this work? So it's very important that we know what the, what the, who's out there, who could potentially bid the work. I mean, even the federal government, they only do set aside, they do set asides for certain kinds of work when they know that they have responsive bidders on a list that are, that are somehow certified through the SBA or through the ADA program. But it's rare. It's not the norm. So for us to do something that would be the equivalent of a set aside, I just don't think that's going to, I don't think that's going to happen. So I think we'll be doing, we'll be setting some modest goals to try to make some inroads and really understand what the contracting community, what their, what their capacities are.
Well, I'm glad you're talking to, yeah, I'm glad you're talking to Champaign. Now, my understanding, glancing through some of their paperwork, is that normally on their CDEP program, they're at 10% minority, 5% women-owned businesses. But I, I'll be curious, you know, with your talks with them next week, what, what they do on a regular basis.
Yeah, we'd like, I mean, my understanding is those are aspirational goals, and I think we'd like to find out, well, how are you doing, you know? Thank you.
Any other questions or motion? Yes, Shandra?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-06-057R, A Resolution Approving the Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have moved by Bishop, seconded by Hershey. And any further discussion? Yes, Shandra?
I just want to, I appreciate the conversation about having CDEP at the forefront of all these capital improvement projects. And I think even that is a, a step in the right direction of having that conversation and making sure that we are making concerted efforts to, to focus on women and minority-owned businesses. And I think, you know, maybe we're not at the specific writing the policy, specific broad, specific goals yet. But I think that just having the, the goal of making sure that we're making that concerted effort to include them and reaching out to them, I think that's the, the step in the right direction. So I appreciate that. And Tim, as always, your presentations and, on the capital improvement plan are very digestible. I understand it. And I hope that inflation does not eat up a lot of the things we want to do moving forward in, in this capital improvement plan.
You, Mary Alice?
So I think maybe a step forward would be to plan, I mean, this, this capital improvement plan is on the website. I mean, this is something that we pass. I would like to see next year incorporated in this as just a good starting part, aspirational goals. That gives us a year to figure out what that's going to be. It'll be included in the executive summary, that the aspirational goals for minority-owned, and I don't want to forget the veteran-owned businesses, women, people of color, and veteran businesses be incorporated in the executive summary. So hopefully that's an achievable goal. All right, thank you.
Any last discussion? And then this being a resolution, we can do a voice vote, correct? Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Our next item is ordinance number 2022-06-024, An Ordinance Amending the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget, Budget Amendment Number H, or Eight by HR Finance. Is it okay if we take the next two together?
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I will go over the budget amendment items first. So there are a couple of things that, you know, some of, most of these are just, you know, updating estimates and timing of expenditures. So we're like moving from fiscal year '22 to '23. So I will go over these briefly and I will answer questions afterwards. So the first item I want to go over is that the city received donations for the arts program, so which will be reflected in the fiscal year '22 revenue budget. But you will see that the expenditures will be added to fiscal year '23 budget, and this is because of just timing of when we think we'll spend the expense. The next item, which is just a correction, a couple of corrections. So first is the, so the environmental control, it used to be under Public Works. So now we, it was moved a couple of years ago to community development. So this is to correct fiscal year '22 budget transfer to IT fund. So we're moving that from Public Works budget to community development. And then a couple of rebudget items. So under motor fuel tax fund, we are carrying over total unspent funds of $167,000 and $95, uh, $95 from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23's budget. And then under cable TV peg fund, we are carrying forward the $50,000 for the replacement of audio, audio equipment for the council chambers to fiscal year '23 budget. And again, this is just a timing of expenditures. So these changes will also reflect the fiscal year '23 budget, which also are shown in the exhibit. And then a couple of estimates, update for it, community development grant funds. So we have, we revised upward the contractual service budget for fiscal year '22 to reflect the true, close to estimated fund balance. And also, this also relates to timing of expenditures. And then in TIF for fund, additional $35,089 is needed to pay for Urbana School District vocational payment. And $31,158 is needed to cover property tax rebate related to a development agreement. And then under IT fund, this is a correction. So additional $63,496 is requested to cover prior year adjustments to prepaid expenditures that were posted in fiscal year '22, but should have been posted prior years. So these generally relate to multi-year contracts that are expensed as services are used. And I think, I believe those are all the budget amendment items. Do we want to go next to budget ordinance or questions? Do you have any questions or do you want me to go over budget ordinance and then ask the questions afterwards?
Any preference? Maybe you just hit us with both of them?
All right. So I'll go over the budget ordinance, changes to the budget ordinance. So a couple of changes on the revenue side under general fund. So first, the decrease in transfers from ARPA fund to general fund. So this is just a correction to reconcile the transfer amount, amount between ARPA fund and general fund. And you will also see that correction under ARPA Fund 350. And then on the expenditure side of the general fund, a couple of error corrections. So you will see that we moved salary and benefits budget for the part-time evidence custodian and intelligence analyst positions from police admin to police criminal investigation divisions. And then under fire operations, salary and benefits for a firefighter position was inadvertently duplicated. So this change is to remove that in the budget. And then under Public Works, the city received only one bid for the janitorial services contract, which was higher than the current. So we are increasing the fiscal year '23 budget by $22,589 to reflect that cost increase. And then in addition, we moved $135,000 for utility locating services budget from Public Works Street and Maintenance to Right-of-Way and Technical Support Division. And then again, that $50,000, I'm sorry. So the $50,000 sponsorship for the African-American Heritage Trail. So this was left, inadvertently left out. So we're just adding that to the fiscal year '23 budget. And under community development grant funds, so that $500,000 related to capital improvement projects that use grant funds, that was duplicated. And so we, we are just removing that, that extra additional $500,000 that's not supposed to be in the fiscal year '23 budget. And I think those are all the things I wanted to point out. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I did just, just want to mention quickly that we are aware of a couple of other cleanup kind of error corrections. So you will be getting revised exhibits for both of these in the packet for next week. As, as usual, it's kind of a rush at the end to get the budget done, and we just missed a couple of things.
Thank you. Do we have questions for our presenters? Yes, Shandra?
Forgive my unknowing, but what does it mean?
Forgive my unknowing, but what does it mean to, when it says reflect timing of expenditures? Like for the, for the motor fuel tax?
So with motor fuel tax, so there, in the budget, fiscal year 22 budget, there are certain projects or things that we don't think we're gonna, it's gonna happen end of fiscal year, which is June 30th. So we're just moving that to fiscal year 23 so we can spend that in that fiscal year.
And then for clarification, unspent $50,000 to replace microphones, that means these are?
So, yes, so the last budget amendment, we did additional $50,000, correct? If you can remember, but we, we are not expecting to spend that at the end of June 30th. So we're just moving that as well to fiscal year 23.
Gotcha, thank you.
I had a question along those lines. I don't know if this is what you were referring to, so I apologize if this is the same question. But in the actual resolution or ordinance, section two, where it talks about the finance director taking the 22, 23 budget and increase expenditures by the amount of encumbrances outstanding of June 30th, 2022, is that just a fancy way of what you're saying of carrying over what's unspent into the next year?
It, it's, it's a slightly different thing. So in that case, when we say something's encumbered, that means we have a purchase order for that. So they've, they followed all our purchasing procedures. If they're required to have EEO approval from the HRC, they've checked all the boxes and we've issued a purchase order. So as a practical matter, what happens in our financial system at the end of the year is if there's an open purchase order on June 30th, when we open the new purchase order, that's still available to be spent and will automatically add that into next year's budget. So we're, we're trying to make sure you know and you approve that that's in fact happening.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, Mayor Marlon?
Just a cleanup item on page one of the budget ordinance under the fourth word. Whereas the date of the public hearing will need to be changed to June 27th.
You are correct. We'll take care of that.
Yes, Mary Alice?
I'll make a motion and a comment, if I can find my agenda here. There it is. I'm always losing this thing. I will move ordinance number 2022-06-024, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 22 budget. Right? Amendment number eight? No, we're doing the budget now. We're doing the regular budget.
You're, you're doing both. So we're amending the current budget. And, and we're also then in a separate ordinance adopting next year's budget. All right.
I think it might be good to take those separate if you're willing to do the amendment first.
Okay, so I'll move that to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, and could we clarify just the 22 amendment was the motion? For council recommendation for approval on regular agenda? Is that correct? Okay. And seconded by Ja Cole City? Okay, and further discussion? I had one. If, Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair. Chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. A question, I'm not sure where all this fits in the 2020 or the 23, or if at all. And I apologize for not getting this one sooner, but things pop up in my brain here at the, in chambers. But I was thinking about last year with the Visit Champagne County and Economic Development. And we had money, I believe, budgeted in there that was reduced by 10,000 with the idea of giving to Buy Black Chambana or, and/or Black Chamber of Commerce that didn't get fulfilled yet. And I didn't know if that money exists and could be carried over or if it's been absorbed into, back into the general fund or anywhere else in here.
That's getting pretty deep into the details, so I'm probably gonna have to make a couple of phone calls tomorrow and dig into that unless Carol knows the answer.
I only know part of the answer. So part of the answer is that $5,000 of that money was allocated to, to spend towards, it wasn't the full amount, towards Head Start Marketing and their efforts to coordinate our CDEP mixer.
Thank you for that information, and I would appreciate any further clarification. That is something that I would like to have included. I think the Head Start Marketing, you know, is great and operated by the same person. And I think that, you know, the intent was to support Buy Black Chambana particularly for minority-owned businesses in Urbana. And I think that that is separate, in my opinion. And I would like to see that in there if possible, and if not, if you can let me know if that's a required amendment motion or if it's something that kind of is already within the budget parameters. And I believe that was all my comments. I'd take the chair back.
Yes, I relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. And any last, final discussion on the 22 budget amendment? Okay, seeing none, could we have, we'll need a roll call for this, is that correct?
Actually, anything that's going to council for final action, you can send by a voice vote. And you can only need to take your roll call during your council meeting on these things.
Okay, so we can voice, voice vote it. Thank you. So with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we had the presentations together, but now we'll talk specifically about adopting the FY 23 budget. Do we have any questions related to that in particular?
I have a question.
Yes, Mary Alice?
So I'm sorry that I just noticed this, but I see that you zeroed out the line for Sister Cities. And I'm wondering, there wasn't anything that was spent this past fiscal year for Sister Cities, is that right?
Right, so our intention was to roll forward whatever is unspent, but we can't do that before the end of the fiscal year because of course we don't know if some of that may be spent.
Right, but our intent, we will roll over whatever is unspent?
Yes, absolutely. Probably in our very first budget amendment.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'd make a motion if there, we want to move that way.
Any last questions? I think we're open for a motion then.
All right, I will move ordinance number 2022-06-024, an ordinance, sorry, 06-025, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 23 budget to City Council with a recommendation for approval. One second.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Mary Alice Wu, seconded by Chandra Bishop for regular agenda with recommendation for approval. And discussion? Yes, Mary Alice?
So I had the opportunity to talk with Elizabeth today about a lot of little nitpicky questions. And I say Elizabeth answered them very quickly to, with a good resolution. There were small little things that, that we kind of had discovered. There's a few small little pending things. One thing that I had a question about that I couldn't, I, I didn't remember, perhaps it was covered before, was the incentive of 2,000 per employee is actually a line item in here. So it's not included in each of the salaries. I was trying to figure that out as I was comparing the salaries. The other thing that I apparently did not know about the budget was that in the fiscal year 2022 budget line item, it reflects any of the budget amendments. So oftentimes what happens when we have, maybe we're down staff, we'll move money from the salary line to a temporary line and so forth. So just strictly comparing what was budgeted in 2022 is not necessarily reflected of what we passed last June. So I just kind of wanted to share that because that was new to me. I hadn't thought of that before. All in all, I think that this budget is fair. I really appreciated how the staff put together their asks. And I think they did a really good job of basically justifying the need for them and how that would improve city services. So with that, and of course, we'll have a few changes as we go, but in general, I'm in support of this budget. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Chandra?
I agree. I like the way the budget was presented this year with, you know, the individual departments sort of giving their, their presentations. It was, it allowed for better digestion, I keep saying that, absorption, I guess, of, of what we're looking at because it is difficult to go through this big book. But, you know, I'm glad that you all are available for questions and then those individual presentations was, were very helpful this year. So I hope that continues.
Yes, Ja?
I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but again, just also want to say thank you. I think the, the individual presentations highlighting some of the key changes. Made it, I mean, last year, I don't even know how many questions I sent you in. This year, it was just really clear. So I just really appreciate that, that clarity upfront.
Thank you. And then, Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair for comments again, please?
Sure, I'll take the chair and I'll recognize Grace.
Thank you. Wanted to just also share some things out of my questions, which I definitely appreciate all the openness for questions and all the presentations that we had this year. Things about TIF ending and just wanted to share and correct me if this is not correct from you all about TIF two ending. And there is a balance that we are going to look into a plan to spend or transfer those funds. And stuff about Central TIF and Hotel Royer with bonds. And I don't know if I may sneak in a question, if you can remind me, but those things we would have to repay over time?
Sure, sure. A bond is basically a loan. So every, anytime we issue debt, that's gonna come before council. You'll have to approve an ordinance for that. And yes, then there'll be a set repayment schedule and we'll have a plan to make those payments probably over 10 years.
But from the city, not the developer?
Correct, from the city. But, but as regards to the Hotel Royer, those revenues are gonna be generated by the TIF from property tax increment, from other taxes that come from the hotel. Our expectation is the project kind of pays for itself, so.
Thank you. And I also have just some concerns about the ARPA standard allowance and any other lost revenue that might not be encompassed in this already. I appreciated the presentation from last week and talking about replenishing the motor fuel tax funds and things for the next few years. I think that definitely makes sense. My original understanding was that this was to not even fill those, that lost revenue from the reduced census and just to maintain normal operations so that we can have the streets plowed and the leaves cleared and things. And I have, I do have concerns now that it seems like we're spending almost 2 million of the 2.5 million in the first year, some planned for four years, and, you know, allocating at least that. So I just have concerns if that's gonna be able to cover other lost revenue or pay for special census, if that's what we need to do. And if this is really in line with maintaining normal operations, rather than it seems like we're adding new positions and adding different things. And I do have concerns that we're spending a lot of this money very quickly in the first few years and have concerns about future deficits that we'll need to cover with that as well. And I think that I also have some concerns about what may be kind of hidden in the numbers, in a sense. I do think that, you know, new technologies, new programs, new positions, things that have a major operational impact, are best to come before city council and the public for that kind of transparency. I appreciate your, you know, logistical answers for how that works. In my understanding that within the budget, there is discretionary spending to a certain point, to certain amounts, and then at some point going up the chain into council. Not sure exactly where to go with that, but just want to express those concerns. And trying to see if that was all of my comments here. I think possibly for now. And again, I appreciate the openness and look forward to kind of a full revised version. We can see it all again before next week. So thank you. And I'd take the chair back.
All right, I relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. Any last discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we have on the floor, on the regular agenda, recommendation for approval for adopting the 23 budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you for the presentations. And then our next item is ordinance number 2022-06-027, an ordinance approving a special use permit with Tatman Towing at 10, 810 and 1,002 Perkins Road, Plan Case 2447 SU 22.
Good evening, council. This is a request by Andrew Fell on behalf of BWC Tundra for a special use permit to allow operation and expansion of a towing service at 810 and 1,002 East Perkins Road in the B3 General Business zoning district. The applicant requests a special use permit to construct a towing service building, paved parking area, and concrete access drive. The existing business, Tatman's Towing, currently stores its service vehicles outside on a gravel parking area. The proposed building would allow it to maintain and store their service vehicles inside as well as pave much of the gravel parking area around the building. Section 61A3 of the zoning ordinance allows a towing service in the B3 district with a special use permit. The Urbana Plan Commission held a public hearing on this permit at its June 9th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend that City Council approve the special use permit with one updated condition as presented. And staff concurs with this recommendation. It is coming first to committee of the whole because it is a special use permit that involves new construction. Tatman's Towing has operated at this location before the property's annexation into the city in 1977. The towing service currently operates on the west side of the zoning lot, here where the cursor is, on the north side of Perkins Road, east of Cunningham Avenue. Other nearby uses include Dustin Sun Auto Supplies, Hickory River Smokehouse and Store, Quest Economy Storage to the north, Three Willows Condominium Subdivision to the east in the county, along with One Residence to the south in the county, and a multi-business contractor building to the south. The zoning map shows the properties, a Zone B3 General Business in the city. There is County Agricultural One to the south and County R3 Residential to the east and south. And it's all B3 General Business along the Cunningham Corridor. The future land use designations of the 2005 Comprehensive Plan show the property as a future land use of community business with multifamily residential to the east and south and residential to the southeast. Here is a Google Street View shot of the property from Perkins Avenue. Dispatch and tow service maintenance activities are conducted in the existing building in the northwest corner of the property. Both tow service vehicles and relocated vehicles are currently stored outside in the north and east portions of the property. Here you can see the building and some of those visitor vehicles. And then you can see the screened-in area back here to the right in which the relocated vehicles are stored. This is an aerial shot of the property. The green pin shows the existing dispatch building. And then this is the fenced-in area with the relocated vehicles in it. And some of these are towing service vehicles along with them being parked out in front as well. This is a shot looking eastward towards the Three Willows Condominium Association. This green area is that eastern lot that is undeveloped. You can see fairly dense landscaping along the east side with a gap there. There's trees along the south property line. And there's some fairly dense landscaping across the street, screening it from the, the adjacent residential use. Dispatch and, let's see, the proposed 8,593 square, oh, here's another aerial shot showing this gap in the landscaping a little closer and more realistically than the other previous Google Street View. There's also a fence on the neighboring property, the Condominium Subdivision. This is the proposed building plan. The proposed 8,600 square foot building would provide additional space to service the existing fleet of towing vehicles and to store them indoors rather than them being stored outside. The existing six-foot-high chain link fence would be removed and replaced with a six-foot-high solid wood fence with added landscaping shifted outward to the east property line. So you can see this line of dots is the proposed fence running along approximately 20 feet in from the property line and then along the southeast half of the property line to the point of the new access drive. And then that fence and added landscaping would pick back up again until it got to the edge of the new building. This new fence would include, enclose not only the relocated access vehicles, which would be stored here, but also this large unpaved, undeveloped area on which vehicles would not be permitted to be parked. The paved area is shown in this white area around the new building. It's currently gravel. They proposed to top it with asphalt millings, which are recycled road pack product. Most of the existing gravel parking area would be topped with those asphalt millings. And then the paved area would continue eastward to the new gravel access drive, which would have a gate on it. The new parking area includes 15 new parking spaces in addition to the existing 19 parking spaces, which fulfills the minimum parking requirement for the expanded towing service. Here is an aerial from the CCGIS online mapping service on which I have superimposed the proposed building area as well as the proposed asphalt parking area around it, leading east to the asphalt milling access lane and then down onto the new proposed concrete access drive. It does show landscaping along the road, which adds screening and gaps, existing gaps in landscaping would be screened by the proposed fence and added landscaping. Screening is required to buffer the County R3 Residential District to the east and the residential use to the south from this commercial activity. Also to screen the off-street vehicle parking from those residential uses and districts. And finally, to screen the outdoor storage of the towed vehicles from all public rights-of-way and the adjacent residential uses or district. So the proposed fence is doing triple duty for screening, things that should not be seen from other places. This screening would be required along the south and east sides of the property around the storage area. And the proposed fence and added landscaping would fulfill the screening requirements for all three of those needs. Existing landscaping on the subject property may be used to fulfill those screening requirements, and it would be replaced when it no longer provides screening, meaning when it dies. As far as public input goes, as required by the zoning ordinance, staff did publish the legal notice of the requested special use permit. We posted a required sign at the site of the request notifying the public of the upcoming public hearing. And finally, we mailed letters to the owners of record of parcels within 320 feet of the bounds of the site. Operators of two neighboring businesses submitted letters of support for the request, and two letters of concern were submitted by the neighboring residential subdivision to the east. Concerns in those letters expressed included screening, stormwater management, site lighting, and use of the east parcel. All of those communications were included in the packet. Staff did conduct additional research, and the responses were included in the staff report regarding the lighting, the stormwater management, the fence, and the use of the east parcel. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about those.
Thank you for the presentation.
In summary, the proposed building, parking lot, paving, and access drive meet the criteria required for a special use permit. The new indoor facility would allow easier maintenance and indoor storage of company property. The wood fence and landscaping will improve the character of the neighborhood by screening the off-street parking and outdoor storage of relocated vehicles and by providing a buffer between the commercial and residential uses. On June 9th, 2022, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on this case. Highlights are included in the staff report. There were no comments from the public at that meeting. The findings are summarized in the staff report. The Urbana City Council has the following options to approve the ordinance or approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions or deny the ordinance. Plan Commission voted unanimously at its June meeting to forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve with the following condition. Construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan entitled Tatman's Towing: New Construction 810 East Perkins Road, dated June 8th, 2022. Staff concurs with this recommendation. If council finds this item appropriate, staff would request it be added to the consent agenda for next week. That is the end of the presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Mary Als?
Hey, Marcus, thank you. I had a quick question, and maybe it was just a misspoke. There was on the east side of the drive that they're doing, you said it was gonna be a gravel drive?
I might have misspoke. The east, the new east drive would be a concrete drive.
Okay, 'cause you said gravel, but I just wanted to make sure it was gonna be concrete.
My apologies. Yep, nope.
Okay. And then my second question has to do with, I'm trying to understand the concerns of the condo association. It seems to me like you've addressed some of them. The fencing and the storm, the combination of the stormwater and the building of the cement wall and then the fencing, it sounds to me like the, you've decided to put in, or they have decided to put in, rather, I'm sorry, a wooden fence, but they have not done the cement part. Is that correct?
That suggestion came from the condominium association.
Right.
That is not a requirement of the zoning ordinance. I believe Mr. Clancy said that in a previous development, maybe for the storage facility, that that development elected to put in a short concrete wall with a fence atop it. Staff did not investigate that because it wasn't relevant to this case. The zoning ordinance requires a six-foot-high solid wood fence or landscaping or berm or wall. In this case, staff think it would be sufficient to put in a solid wood fence that's six feet tall. What they are screening are vehicles, so having a six-foot-tall fence on top of a short concrete wall to screen vehicles that are probably no larger than five feet seems to be a little out of the ordinary.
That's not my take from reading their letter. My take is not, I mean, see, there's twofold, right? So one is the screening so that the residents won't see lots of vehicles parked right against their backyard.
Right.
And that certainly can be covered by a fence that has no, you know, it's not a chain link fence. But the second piece is, it has to do with the stormwater. And that, that, my reading of this letter, basically, I think that they feel, and I'm not an engineer, that putting that concrete below as the basis for the fence would then prevent some of that stormwater runoff going into their area. That's my read of this, but I'm not an engineer, and so I was hoping that you could speak a little bit more to that.
I believe you are interpreting their comments and concerns correctly.
Okay.
As far as stormwater management goes, the stormwater plan is being reviewed by the engineering division and city engineer John Zeeman. The original drainage pattern for this property has the drainage moving northward to a, I call it a micro-regional stormwater detention basin that is located on the storage facility's property. So the stormwater is...
The other business, you're talking about the business north of them?
Right. The stormwater is supposed to move in that direction. It is not...
It's not supposed to move east?
It's not supposed to move east.
Okay.
Mr. Zeeman in... gave some comments to the developers stating, if you meet these three criteria, you will not be required to submit a stormwater management plan. One of those is that the drainage pattern be maintained, which would include that stormwater would not move eastward onto the residential subdivisions' property. I can share those comments with you if you like. I think in summary, though, stormwater should not be moving eastward into the residential subdivision. That will be reviewed by the engineering division to ensure that it doesn't.
So, so my question, I guess, then, is, is if the review comes back and says something that we don't expect, and we approve this special use permit, what recourse would that neighborhood have? Let's, I'm just, it's a hypothetical here, but I'm trying to figure out if we put this on the consent agenda, and, which means there's no discussion, right, during city council meeting, and the, for whatever reason, the architectural designs and then the stormwater review says, oh, well, now the water, wastewater is being moved to the east instead of the north. I mean, if, as a resident, I would not be very happy.
Right. So I would, I would defer to either Public Works Director Cowan or city engineer Zeeman for specific comments about stormwater management. But in general, the proposed condition says, construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan. So, you know, special use permits, conditional use permits are being processed concurrently with plan review. We don't wait until the final review is submitted. So if the plan needs to be adjusted to meet city regulations, and it's still in general conformance with the site plan that you've approved, then we're okay. But if the site plan changes dramatically, then they would have to come back and request a new special use permit. Now, this special use permit doesn't show stormwater management facilities, but that's not out of the ordinary because that, you know, you're not approving construction specifications in a special use permit. You're approving the land use.
Oh, Tim's here today.
So dur, during the plan review, if you guys approve the special use permit for the intended use of space with the provisions Marcus has talked about, during plan review, we will ensure that that meets our stormwater management ordinance for subdivision of land development codes. If it does not meet that, we will not approve that.
So does that include, I mean, what happens, I don't know how that intersects with the changing of the flow of where it would drain in our ordinance?
That, that is all connected in our ordinance. So the, the intention is essentially with drainage, you have to follow the natural path of drainage unless you divert it and prove that there are not negligent effects or something downstream. Typically, how that works, a lot of people, detention ponds. So you flow, you could flow a big pipe into a detention pond. It provides capacity to buffer the downstream flow so you don't inundate downstream, which is essentially what's happening here now. The development, Marcus talked about a little bit, north of this facility, when they went in, because of how they wanted to develop, they had to accommodate additional site drainage from upstream into that detention before it traversed east and north of there, which is what that detention pond he spoke of from the storage facility there to the north is. So in doing all of this, that will all have to be reviewed. Pending, they, they trigger the requirement of a stormwater management plan, which is tied to the use of the property and the size of the property and then imperviousness of an, of area. So if they don't trigger a review, essentially saying they're not changing enough substantially on site to create mitigating new stormwater factors, we don't require a stormwater management plan. If they do, we have, we have, we have thresholds within that subdivision of land development code that tells us, you have to accommodate this. You have to show us that you're not creating a detriment downstream of here.
So what I'm hearing you say is that there's not even a guarantee that they would have to do a stormwater management plan. It depends on what the review shows.
Correct. Correct. It, it depends on what development is happening. So based on the size of development, the type of development, the size of the parcel to use, we have different thresholds within the subdivision land development code that require a stormwater management plan and that don't.
So they'll be covering an impervious into an impervious amount, all right? So they're going from gravel to cement. Would that trigger a storm management plan?
Not exactly. It, it depends on the situation. That's another thing within our land development code. We want to kind of update, I guess I'll say. We don't specifically delineate imperviousness versus pervious between asphalt and gravel. We treat them both as impervious, actually. As current standards. And, and some of that's generally because the wear, if you're using aggregate as a wearing surface over time, it compacts, the voids fill, it's less porous, things like that, which is why that assumption has been made. Is the runoff factor quite the same? Probably not, but they're not that dissimilar either, so we've always treated them as impervious for stormwater management purposes.
And so at this time, do you know, is there a stormwater management plan that's required of this project?
I don't know, just because I haven't been engaged on this. John has been engaged on this. We have some other things we're reviewing as the city because we have public drainage that kind of traverses the same path as well. So we, we are engaged from the city side independently as well to try to review some of that stuff, aside from whether this requires a stormwater management plan or not.
And so the other thing that I heard you say is that you require one pending the size of the building and so forth, if you change the natural flow of the, of the drainage. And the detention pond, is that considered the natural flow of moving to the north?
Yes.
Okay, so if they, if they meet the standards, they need a stormwater review, then we, as a city, would confirm whether or not where that drainage is going?
Correct.
If they don't meet the standard for the review, then it's, it is what it is.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. And it, it's, it's all about the, the percentage of impactful, impactful change. It's, it's trying to mitigate something so we're not reviewing every small development that's unimpactful for that purpose. Certainly, you know, their subject, you know, those thresholds are set, you know, with, with reasonable assumptions, but, you know, certainly depending on, on those type of things, it could be that, you know, somewhat impactful or somewhat non-impactful.
So by next meeting, would it be possible to tell us whether or not it's gonna require? I don't know how difficult that is to figure that out.
I, I don't know what we have submitted to us yet, so it's hard for me to say, but we could certainly look into it and try to provide better details than I can tonight.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you answering questions on the spot. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, is question? Okay, yes, Teresa?
Okay, my, my comments or question two is asked basically because this is a, heavy trucks, heavy, heavy vehicles will be moving next to a residential area, and I'm thinking noise pollution. I'm thinking about lights glaring in people's homes. Not only that, but just the, the noise of several vehicles being moved or parked. Has anyone thought about that?
So this is not a proposed expansion of the scope or hours or vehicle fleet. They are proposing to build a building so that they can work on the vehicles inside and park the existing fleet vehicles inside.
So are they gonna be parking, coming off of Perkins, Perkins, I mean, is the road gonna be coming off of Perkins Road? I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
It's not, so it's not going to be, but they still will be driving in that area?
As they have been since 1977.
Well, they haven't, not since 1977. Well, they haven't, not since nineteen seventy-seven with the place where there's no building. That's my point. There's a different, the distance, I'm saying that the distance, you know, there's going to be mechanical, and may- and maybe I'm looking at it incorrectly. I know it'll be inside, but at the same time, I'm still thinking in terms of, because all of this is vacant. The, the parcel, that one parcel right now is vacant. And they're gonna put a garage there.
No, no, they, they wanna put a garage on the west side of the parcel.
Okay.
Where it's currently a gravel parking area.
Okay.
So, they wanna put the new building right here.
So, they're, okay, so they're not going to be using the other, the gap? Is that what I don't know?
Correct.
Because I was kinda getting confused during your thing. My under- so, they wanna put a new garage upon that par- upon the, that one parcel?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
So, here's, zoom in a little bit. This is all currently a gravel parking area.
Uh-huh.
And rather than store their fleet vehicles outside-
Right.
They wanna store them inside, they want larger space to work on them inside. They're not proposing to buy any more vehicles to expand or to expand their hours of operation or to add any employees.
Okay.
They're adding a building to do the things that they're already doing. So, if anything, they will be reducing noise-
Reducing noise, okay.
Reducing gravel dust. They'll be improving their fencing, so you'll see less of the things that people are already seeing.
Okay, so, on, on the picture with vehicles, could you show me, like, where the fencing is going to be? I mean, you can show me with this and I, and it's not gonna help, but on a, yeah.
So-
Where are they talking about putting the fencing?
Along, oh, I'll actually show you right here. So, this dotted line-
Uh-huh.
Would, this is the rear property line, they would connect from the rear property line. It'd be roughly twenty feet in from the east property line, depending, so they can avoid the trees that are there now. And then that fence would come along the south property line until it got to the new concrete access drive. And then that new fence would continue westward to the corner of the building. And that'd be a solid six-foot tall, high fence with landscaping along it, which are these trees and shrubs here.
Okay. So, exhibit, on exhibit F, can you show me the, that same, what you're talking about? Yeah. Right. Because I'm not an engineer either. There we go.
So, essentially, Charisse, the, the fence line's gonna traverse that north property line. You see that it's along the tree line, more or less?
Uh-huh.
And then it's gonna stop about twenty feet short of that yellow north-south line-
Okay.
And come down to the other yellow line, more or less. And then come back over to the, the area of development, we'll say.
Now, that's very helpful, thank you. And so, the, and the building, the new garage, will be built where the little square where the cars are, the, the empty space?
Correct, in, in the, inside the blue square, in that gravel lot, east of the existing building.
Okay, thank you for putting it in kindergarten terms for me, because I was not really kinda understanding. I'm like, where, where are they building, so now, no, that helps a lot.
So, this is laid out a little better to scale. You know, you can see inside the green, these are all the vehicles that they park already.
Uh-huh.
This is the property line, but the fence is basically along the edge of the, those vehicles there. They wanna pave all of that gravel area and then build the building in the middle of it.
Okay.
So, they're, you know, by this point, the gravel parking area is probably as impervious as asphalt millings would be, but that's, you know, science and stuff.
Okay, that, yeah, that's very, that's a lot more helpful, thank you, because I, I had it totally different in my head looking at, at this, thank you.
Do you have any further questions? I have one more question or motion? Okay, if I could slide in my last question, I think we've clarified a lot of this, and it sounds like the concerns from the condo association have been addressed, that they're not losing green space, there will be screening, and they'll have to meet the, you know, city light requirements for light trespassing. My question is, if that was communicated with the condo association, like emailed back to that member of the public, or did they, you know, attend that meeting, just if that got communicated with the association?
So, they did not attend that meeting. I did share my staff report with them and told them that staff was recommending the six-foot-high solid wood fence with the added landscaping.
And did it seem like there was, if you had a sense of an understanding or, you know, approval of that plan?
They simply asked for the revised site plan to be shared with them, and that was actually part of the, the staff packet. We, I haven't heard back from them. No one attended the plan commission from the condominium association. They will be notified that there will be, the vote will be next Monday.
Okay, thank you. So, are there any further questions? I'd love a motion. Yes, Chandra?
I move approval of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-six-dash-zero-two-seven, and ordinance approving a special use permit, Tadmont, Tony, and eight-ten, and ten-oh-two Perkins Road, Plan Case twenty-four-forty-seven-dash-SU-dash-two-two, BWC Tundra LLC, onto city council for approval on the regular agenda.
A second. Thank you, we have motion by Chandra, seconded by Jaya, for sending this ordinance to city council, regular agenda, with recommendation for approval. Correct? Okay. Thank you, and all, oh, last discussion? Yes, Mary Alice?
Thank you. So, I, I will say that in general, I think this is a great improvement to the property. Improving not only the, the gravel, removing the gravel, but building. I think it's gonna be good for the neighborhood to have that additional screening. So, it, the, all those things are good about this project, I, I think it's a great project. My only concern is that stormwater. And so, you know, as long as those can be assuaged, I'm a hundred percent behind this, so, those, those are my comments.
Thank you, any last discussion? Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And our last item on the agenda is council input and communications. Any council members that would like to speak? Uh, oh, Jaya, go ahead.
Thank you. So, a few things, first of all, I just wanted to express my gratitude for being able to be at the flag raising in honor of Juneteenth on Friday. A, a number of us were able to be present for that really important, momentous event. I appreciate it being held over lunch hour to make it more possible for more of us to be here. I think, Charisse, oh, you, thank you for that specifically, so, was just really, really an incredible moment, so really grateful for that. I also wanna give a shout out to retired Chief Seraphin and to interim Chief Searls for arranging an opportunity for a conversation that the mayor and myself and some other members of the public were able to be a part of related to the de-escalation training that our law enforcement officers are, or participated in last week. I think it's really important to have those opportunities to learn more about the training our officers are getting and to, to hear a little bit about their feedback of, of what it was like for them to get that additional tool as well. So, I appreciate that opportunity and look forward to being part of more of those conversations as we continue to think about what safety in our community looks like.
Thank you, Chandra, did you have those?
A couple of things I, I heard this evening about notifications for the public, specifically publishing in the news gazette. I just wondered if there was, it was possible for the city to start publicizing meeting notifications online as well, in addition to the news gazette. I, I know myself, I don't necessarily read the paper, but I think word would get out a lot wider. I think if it was also, I don't know, published somewhere else beside the paper. I know the ordinance says and things say publish in the, in the newspaper, but maybe perhaps somewhere in addition to the newspaper. And then also, I guess there's, there's been several inputs about audio issues for our meetings. I understand that perhaps new audio or whatever is coming since we moved that fifty thousand dollars forward, but I hope that we can continue to work on that and make sure our meetings are accessible. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, other comments? Uh, yes, Mayor Marlin?
Just a couple of things, first of all, I wanna thank the staff who planned the flag raising and Juneteenth ceremony on Friday, I appreciate the work that went into that, and also appreciate those of you who were able to attend. Thought it was a very, very good first ceremony for this event. Secondly, I wanted to let folks know that the city has signed the contract with the search firm who will conduct the searches for the Chief of Police and Community Development Services Director. So, once we work, we'll, next steps, we'll be working with them to develop the process for recruitment and public engagement portion of the search, and they will be bringing that back to council for an update that, on that. And third, encourage anyone who can to come to Jetty Roads Day in King Park this coming Saturday from noon to four P.M. This is, this is a wonderful community event that's going on close to twenty-five years now, but it, it's just a, bringing community together in the park, and it's just a wonderful opportunity to meet, meet people and really experience the, the breadth of what we have in our community. The city will have a table there, and I certainly welcome you to join us at the table anytime during that afternoon. And if it's like the past, there will be fire trucks and police cars there as well, so. So, it's just a wonderful, and a barbecue cook-off, and I believe something about cake, so. It's a, it's just a fun day for everybody, so thank you.
Thank you, Charisse?
Well, since she just got through talking about Jetty Roads Day, I'm gonna say that it is fun, a fun day, and it's a fun day for kids, families, everybody that comes out. And usually also, there's a band. So, Candy Foster usually has his band there, and everybody's dancing and boogying. And another thing I also wanted to add, and to piggyback off of what Jaya said regarding the Juneteenth celebration, I was very happy to be able to attend that, even though I, I didn't really get to stay and talk and, and schmooze, you know, much afterwards. But it was, I thought it was a, a very, a very nice first time that, you know, we've actually done that, and I thought, I thought that we represented well for this new holiday that's coming up, and I hope that it'll be something that we can just grow on from, from now on, so, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, any other comments? I have some, if Mary Alice would you mind taking the chair, please?
Sure, the chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I'm sorry to spoil some of our more pleasant talks. I did want to address some things that were said about the reappointment process, since I wasn't here the past few weeks to comment for myself. I did wanna clarify that, the way I see it, I did not do anything wrong with dividing the question. That's within our rights, and there was majority support for that from council, and that I have the right to vote yes or no. I understand that this is not a hiring or firing process. It is an appointment and reappointment process, which is our job to be evolved in as council. And just because someone doesn't like or agree with it, doesn't make it wrong or inappropriate. I don't appreciate that this has become a repeated pattern of being told that something is wrong, illegal, inappropriate, or against the norm, when it's just something that's within my right as a council member and in line with my duties to represent the public and do what I believe is right. I have concrete reasons for my votes on reappointments. I don't have to discuss it with the mayor or council members privately ahead of time. That's not in the spirit of O M A, to my understanding, or transparent government. Feel free to correct me if that's not the case, where it's written that I need to consult ahead of time for my vote. I've personally witnessed things that I don't approve of for the people I voted against, that I found dishonest, unethical, unproductive, and possibly illegal. And these are concrete things that are not a gray area of opinion that needs to be discussed. I thought that my dissatisfaction was clear in each of these instances. I tend to make my concerns known, and I addressed those issues at the time. For example, there was even a public memo with concerns on one of these individuals, on how things were handled with last year's budget in a follow-up model. So, I thought that that was clear and didn't need any further discussion. My vote was not planned or coerced with other council members. It's interesting for one person to suggest the issue of looking like collusion and saying that I should discuss everything publicly, and then in the same, you know, comments, another person saying that they're upset that I didn't consult with them privately ahead of time, and that I shouldn't discuss things publicly. So, if anyone wants to know my reasons, they can feel free to ask me. I didn't think that the public meeting was the time or place to express individual reasons for my vote, but I will if that's what people would like. I have not received a call or email from anyone up here, other council members or the mayor, asking about my votes. The way I see it, I have the right to my vote, and my responsibility is primarily to the public and to my constituents. I want to work respectfully and productively with city staff and the executive branch, of course, and I understand wanting a heads up about a big vote or something that could have a real impact. I would also like more lines of communication, I think that would be a great idea. I will try to express the reasons for my vote, and anyone can feel free to reach out and ask me. I understand that surprises on appointments aren't ideal, and again, I thought that my dissatisfaction was clear. I liked Councilmember Evan's suggestion of maybe having those opportunities in a formal system where we could express any thoughts or concerns on appointments, if that's something that would like to be discussed ahead of time. Again, I don't think that having any conversations ahead of time would have had an influence on my vote, so I didn't find it necessary. I am willing to have those conversations to take the opportunity to express those reasons to work towards future growth and preventing them from happening in the future. I do think that would be helpful. I think it's not productive to stir up drama with the media and make it look like I did something wrong when I have not. This is the way our government's set up, it's the checks and balances of office, and I'm not doing anything outside my rights and duties as a council member, and I will not be manipulated by these tactics. I'm not a rubber stamp council member, and I'm not going to approve the list of appointments altogether when I may take issues with individuals.
I was just gonna let you know that your time is up, Grace.
Oh, thank you, perfect timing, I'll take the chair back.
All right, you can have the chair.
Thank you, yes, Chris?
Yeah, I, with regards to the reappointments, like I said last time, whenever I have a problem with people, I'm gonna, you know, schedule a meeting and talk to them in person, and I'm gonna take responsibility for that. But it's, but once it comes to voting on it, it is, I, I agree with Councilmember Wilkin that the council has the right to divide the question, and the council has the right to, you know, do what they see is best for the city and, and make the vote that they wanna make. And it's been a, a kind of unfair for Councilmember Wilkin to be singled out as being the problem when that, that she was just following, doing her job and, you know, following what the procedures were laid out for, so, that's all I wanna say. Oh, also, happy birthday, Urbana!
Thank you, and anyone else who hasn't spoke, would be just Mary Alice? Okay, thank you, then, with no further business before this committee of the whole, we will adjourn.